All the students of Uptown Board of Education, the order, first order of business is to stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to read the mission statement?
Yeah, be happy to. The mission of the Uptown County Schools is to provide academic preparation, social responsibility, employability, and a desire of lifelong learning.
Thank you. Please let the clerk note that all members are present with the exception of Mr. Suter and Mrs. Loudon. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and/or agenda adjustments.
We do have additions to personnel, it's under, yeah. At the last page.
Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please sign off saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, item five is minutes, you have those from November 3rd and November 14th. The November 3rd special meeting and the November 14th. Do I have a motion to accept those as presented?
Yeah, motion to accept this as presented.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please sign off saying aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number six, acknowledgements and/or announcements, Uptown Highlights.
My favorite part of board meetings. Maybe the only favorite part of it. We'd like to announce our, November Employees of the Month, Keys to Excellence. We have one served personnel and one professional. And what's nice about these, these are nominated by their fellow employees, the principals in the schools, and they're chosen by a committee at the board office. And I have no fault of that. So first I'd like, I think I saw Steven back here, Steve here, Linger, you gotta come up front, you don't get to sit in the back. Steve is our Sir Employee of the Month. He's custodian at Buchanan Upsher High School. I'll do that. Then I get to read while you were nominated.
Okay.
Can't tell you though. Sorry. Steve Linger has worked at BUHS for many years, and he has a smile on his face and lifesavers in his pocket. He is diligent in making sure our facility is clean and orderly. Steve has always been ready to help in any way possible. He will help organize rooms, tables and chairs or desks, and does these extra things with enthusiasm. Has even brought in personal items to help make the task easier. Steve is a think smarter, not harder problem solver. If Steve had not brought in some items that make moving bulky pieces easier, the whole process would have been a much more daunting task. Mr. Linger is willing to help anyone who asks for assistance. He seems to have a good working relationship with others in his department, as well as the rest of the faculty and staff. With a broom or mop in hand, Steve goes about his daily routine, sorry. If Mr. Linger notices something that needs completing, he does the job and does the task correctly. But Buchanan Upsher High School is fortunate to have Mr. Steve Linger, working to keep this school running. Cares about these facilities and it shows. Thank you for all that you do, please know that you are appreciated. Congratulations. Thanks, Steve. And I guess it was a clean sweep for the high school this time. Our Professional Personnel Employee of the Month is Mrs. Beatrice Burnside, from Buchanan Upsher High School, science teacher. Okay, let me read about B. Mrs. Burnside has taught in Uptown County for many years. She's a member of the curriculum team, has attended Silk Meetings, participates in faculty senate committees, and an active participant in her own department. She is active in the school and in the community. Mrs. Burnside is always looking for new ways to provide quality instructions to students. Therefore, she is looking for ways to ensure our students are career and college ready. Students complete research projects, use QR codes, work collaboratively, share various presentation models, and are always testing their theories. The latest learning initiative, and I was hoping this was gonna be on this, Mrs. Burnside's students tried, involved a way to reinforce skills taught through a unit. The lesson involved teams of students working collaboratively. Mistakes were made, confidence gained, solutions found. Students had to develop and use problem-solving skills. They had to work on both written and oral communication skills. These are skills our workforce demands and a challenge to students to persevere. Mrs. Burnside doesn't just do a sit-and-get type of class. She's a leader, researcher, and a scientist. We are lucky to have Mrs. Burnside as part of our faculty. As of the time this has been written, Mrs. B. Burnside is the only teacher who has used breakout boxes in our school. And for, or perhaps the county and/or the state. Other teachers have asked questions and are looking and developing a plan, but Mrs. Burnside is the first. She was excited about learning a new way to teach. When our teachers are excited about learning and teaching, our students are excited too. And I actually got to see this project, what they did is they had these boxes, and they had like four or five different locks on them. And the kids had to come up, they had clues how to open each of the locks, and to see what was inside. And just to watch the kids doing it was amazing, I mean, they were into it, daytime. And it was a great experience for the kids, I think.
It was.
And we won't say there was candy inside, but, and I think they're gonna, they're gonna do them again and change the locks and add new things inside. It was a great experience for the students, congratulations.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item seven is the LSIC and faculty senate reports. We will hear from Hottusville Elementary first.
Okay, I'm Jane Phillips, I'm the principal of Hottusville Elementary School. And I have with me this evening Leandra Moreland, who's our first grade teacher and our faculty senate chair, and Taylor Skelton, who's our kindergarten, Tammy Tanny, who's our kindergarten A teacher. And she's also our LSIC chair. I have several staff members and LSIC members with us, if you all would stand, so they can see our. Okay. I want to start this evening with a review of our 2016-17 goals. We had set three goals for last year. One was that, of course, we wanted to make math achievement. And we wanted our school to score a 45 SGP or higher according to the SAR benchmark. As a school, we were able to meet that average. And we also set the same goal for reading, language arts, and early literacy. And once again, as a school, we were able to meet that average. In your packet, I did put graphs with all of the details for each grade, but overall, as a school, we were able to meet that, so we were very excited. Our third goal was that we wanted to have 95% or more of our students in low or medium risk, as measured by Bright Bites, provided by the state with the data. And we were very excited when we ended the year with 96% of our students in that. So we had a very successful year last year with meeting our goals. So now, Mrs. Moreland is going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we're doing to help us meet those goals.
There's many things outlined in your report, but I just wanted to highlight a few things that we felt were the most important. So over the past few months, we have been going to trainings to become a PBIS school. And over the course of the next year, we'll be implementing that into our school, so that is in progress. One really neat thing that we started this year was, Mrs. Phillips found a communication log that goes home daily with our kids. And it gives them great, okay, or needs to improve in different areas of their day. And so, we decided for the nine weeks that if they got 10 or less needs-to-improve checks, and four or less days signed, then they get to attend an award. So, so far, we went to the skating rink for an award, and then in December will be like a drive-in movie. The kids really, really like that. It helps us teachers be able to communicate on a daily basis with parents about things going on in the classroom, behavior, and so on. Another thing that teachers use is all the logic techniques for discipline. We feel that that is most important because not only does it show the kids respect, but it allows them to save face and keep their dignity whenever they have consequences occur. Another thing that we saw with our kiddos was that they were tattling a lot, they were coming to us about these little deals. So we created a Mindful Monday and a Thoughtful Thursday for morning announcements, where we present them a problem and we use teachers as the example. And then, in our morning meetings, we talk about, well, was that a big deal or a little deal? And what part of our mission statement do they need to work on, or did they display? And I feel like that's going really well in our morning meetings. We use Essential 55 social skills. We implemented attendance incentives, because we saw that we had habitual attendance issues with some of our kids. And we've been really successful with that. We have a monthly activity, and then they can build up to the end of the year where we have a really big overall incentive if they have five or less absences. And then, the last thing that we have looked at was data for behavior. And we saw big spikes in lunch and recess behavior issues. So last year, we implemented something called Zero Heroes. And if they got zero check marks for lunch and recess, then they got to attend an activity on Friday that the teachers created and put on. And that was very successful, so we were able to go from weekly, and now we're bi-monthly, and we're slowly doing a gradual release, and hopefully we'll go to monthly activities for that.
And I included some information in your packet with graphs showing our data, as well as the information that we share with parents, so that you all have that information. And I didn't say at the beginning, we're combining LSIC and faculty senate, because we're such a small school, that everybody's a part of everything, so we're combining everything.
I have some questions before you go on. You said if they had 10 or fewer needs improvement, and then four?
Or less, like their parents have to sign the communication log every night. And if they have four or less, then they get to go to the award too.
Can other adults in the house sign that, or older siblings?
Absolutely, yes. In fact, some of the kiddos that we have seen that, you know, we can peg, that won't get it signed. We have mentors set up through the school with other teachers, other adults, so if they come to school and they take it to that adult to get it signed, absolutely.
So we're trying to make it a child-centered issue, not a parent.
Right.
So Mrs. Tanny is now going to talk about some of the things we're doing with academics.
With academics, we implement a variety of strategies and use a variety of resources to differentiate instruction for the students and meet them on their level. In grades kindergarten through fifth, we use investigations as our adopic curriculum, but we also supplement that with Eureka Math. This is just used to help students foster a deeper understanding for mathematical concepts. In addition, Zern.com is also used. Kindergarten through fourth grade teachers use Bob Sorenson's Mathematical Assessments to figure out where the math gaps are with the students, with their mathematical knowledge. And then, we use that data to drive our instruction. In grades kindergarten through fifth, Lucy Caulkins' Units of Study is used to develop and expand students' writing skills. In all grades at our school, we use Daily Five and Cafe to teach our reading and language art skills. Collaboration between the Title I and the General Education teacher is really prevalent in this area. And then, the Basil and the Journey Series is also used. In kindergarten first and second grade, we use the Wilson Language Program Foundations. And the Title I teacher, Mrs. Smith, teaches this, but the general education teachers. This is a research-based program that emphasizes phonemic awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, reading fluency, vocabulary comprehension strategies, handwriting, and spelling. And we have noticed phenomenal gains in our students by using this. Word Journeys is also used to differentiate spelling and meet the students on their needs at their level. And then, our Title I teacher implements the Level Literacy Learning, the Tongue-Tail Program, with struggling readers. In addition, the Diagnostic Decoding Survey is also administered. And this helps her figure out where the gaps are and what students are struggling with, and then we use this data to drive instruction.
And I have to say with the foundations, we gave our first grade class the Reading Start Test today, and we were very excited that we had 67% of our students in first grade at or above mastery. So, we were very excited with that.
I've been over the moon today. Then the next thing I would like to point out is the Character Education and Student of the Month program that we have continued. We looked at a way to make a new nomination system, and we have a new form for teachers and a new way to nominate kiddos. So, we, as teachers, can nominate our kids, but if a teacher in another class has noticed this child has been really displaying the Character Ed characteristic this month, then they can actually nominate an extra child from your classroom. So we kind of have brought in outside help with nominating kids. And then, one thing we also changed was now, our Character Ed and Student of the Month are presented at our PTO meetings once a month to get parent involvement, and then the teacher gets to read why they got selected and present them with their award for that. And it's been very successful.
So, and we have lots of teamwork at Hottusville, we have a very active parent volunteer group that run our library. They are in and out of the building, helping us all the time with all of our activities. The PLC times that are provided to us monthly are wonderful, because it gives us a chance to look at all of this data, do all of these incentives, use all of the curriculum. We also, in addition, have Title I funds set aside that we meet once a month as a K-2 team and as a 3-5 team. So we have half an hour, actually, it's an hour within a school day, but half an hour of students go to their partner class. And then, the other hour is after-school time that we all stay and sit down, look at data, do some learning ourselves, so that we can keep abreast of our student needs. And then, the goals meetings that are held by the directors are very helpful, because they help look at the data as well and give us feedback. And as soon as I walk in the building, they're meeting me at the door, saying, well, what did they say? What do we need to do? And so, so we are all working hand in hand to help our students become well-rounded, which is part of our goal, is we want to have well-rounded students growing up to be citizens of Uptown County. So we'd like to thank you all for your support, and we appreciate everything you do, both as the Board of Education and at the central office. Anything else, ladies? Thank you. Any questions?
I always ask all the, all the schools, if they don't have another presentation, what kind of needs you have that the board office can try to help you with?
Well, our biggest need is space. As you know, we have the second kindergarten this year, so we are very cranked for space. Everybody is so willing to share. We have the refrigerator and the microwave in one of the teachers' offices, we, I mean, we're just, we're out of space. And I know that's a big request, but we are making do, and we're a good team because of it.
I want to let you know that I love your newsletters you do every month.
Oh, thank you.
Very informative.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for your hard work, ladies.
Thank you.
Transition to the Academy.
I would like to start off by presenting the student artists who drew your characters of you this evening. So if you were a student artist, if you would come up front, please. So, the artist of Mr. Wager was Mr. Owen Thorne, he's in first grade. The drawing Dr. Samples was Reese Curry. Drawing Mr. Suter was Dan and Moran, who's not here. Drawing Mrs. Loudon was Alexis Wulshner and Lena Rose Walker. Drawing Mr. Allman was Lena Rose Walker. And then, drawing Mr. Martin was also Owen Thorne. So I want to give our students a big hand. We also have several members of our student council, safety patrol, and selected students from their teachers, selected them to come represent our school this evening. So if you're a member of any of those groups, if you would come up front and be recognized. So our red shirts are student council, we have Naveah Dean, Ella McNish, Quinn Burnside, Katie Stess, Cora Lips, and then for safety patrol is Brayden Osbert. And then, representing fifth grade that was selected by teachers is Chase Hackett. Okay, so LSIC team, if you'll come up now. So we also have several staff members and family members here in the audience. We're gonna start with our LSIC presentations and then roll into our faculty senate meeting. But if you're a representation of Buchanan Academy, would you please stand? And thank you for coming.
Bring a lot of people to present. So I guess I'll go ahead and start with our goals. And we had four goals that we had in our strategic plan. And we had talked about student engagement. And in the past, we had talked about increasing a certain type of engagement, but we had decided that we wanted to look at decreasing disengagement. So that was our goal instead, because we feel like, no matter what kind of teaching is going on, as long as students are engaged, we're learning something. And so, our goal was to have it 2%, which was a pretty lofty goal. And I believe that we were at 5% overall. And the year before, when I looked at it, it was 6%. So we're making progress, and we are continuing with that goal again this year. And then, our goals, number two and three, we looked at student achievement, and I used our summative assessment as our measure. And my director said that 50% was probably pretty lofty also, especially if you knew what our scores were before. Overall, in ELA, our proficiency was 36%, and that was an increase of 6% from the previous year. And so, we will continue again and, you know, keep going at it. As for math, we also had our goal at 50% proficiency, and we made 32% proficiency. And that was an increase of 11% from the year before. And if you recall from the previous year, our main focus was math, because our math scores were so low. And then, really overall, in the past two years, we've increased by 13% in math, our overall proficiency, which is pretty significant in the big picture of things. Our fourth goal was to have 95% of our parents' families involved at school. And what we did was we made a school list, because we have 500 some students, but we really have three, I think it's 358 families. And so, then when we have events, we always make our parents sign in, and so we kind of tracked how many people were coming. We had 97% of our families in attendance at least once. Many times, and I didn't actually calculate that, but we had families that came to every event. We had parent involvement events, we had Citizen of the Month events, many things. So 97% of our families have been into the school at least one time to be involved in some sort. I'm gonna go ahead and move right into talking about our testing scores, because I feel it just kind of goes hand in hand. I made just a little kind of graph. On top, it just kind of is a graph of the county scores and our scores. And I'm really proud of our scores. And though I know that we are not, you know, at the top of Uptown County or the top of the state, I know that if you recall three years ago when I started here, that we were the lowest in proficiency in every area. And if you look at it now, I mean, we have made pretty phenomenal gains in that area. And the other little charts that are below just talk about the same increase that we have made, 13% in math. And then, reading ELA, we've kind of stayed the same, and so we have been really focusing a lot on that this year after we've gotten our scores back. So, on the back of this, I've listed some of the things that we're doing to improve our deficiencies. And for me, the first one that I listed was goal meetings that we have with our directors, and Mr. Wager and Mr. Rieger. And those kind of give me a time to sit down with them and talk about my school's data, and we talk about the progress we're making, and we even talk about ways that I can improve things, and I bring some of those suggestions back to the staff, and we make some changes that way. We do that four times a year, and I find that very valuable. We've also created consistency in our curriculum and instruction throughout the building. With the staff our size, we had people teaching math different ways. We had some teachers were doing different phonics programs, different writing programs. And so, we have kind of streamlined what we're doing, and we're all on board, using the same curriculum and teaching our kids with the same kind of strategies. So that way, when our students go from first grade to second grade, the curriculum is the same, we're teaching them with the same strategies, and the kids aren't taking extra time learning those kind of things, we can jump right into the curriculum. Things that have also been useful in improving deficiencies is walkthroughs. We use that to give our teachers feedback on what we see and the things that we're expecting to see. And I think that's helping instruction in our building as well. We also have bi-weekly PLC meetings, where we look at student data, instructional practices, interventions. My staff even created curriculum maps and pacing guides that we use around our building. And also, we use our early-out days for PLCs. And we have mainly focused on math, because that was, at the end of last year, that was where we were headed. And so, we've been doing a lot with Eureka Math. And Eureka Math is amazing, because it completely aligns with our standards. Before the math, we were using probably 64%, I think is what we said when we looked at it. It covers 64% of our standards. So, all the rest of that, we had to either find things, or sometimes we didn't get it taught the right way. Eureka covers every one of our standards, and we're using that, school-wide. Sets teachers to training, and they have been training our staff during PLC time. Other things, we have base buddies, we talk about like the students who are at risk. We kind of use Bright Bites, look at those students, find our most at-risk students. We make a list, and all of our staff signs up for one of those kids to be their mentor. And so, we call them our base buddies. And sometimes we have ones with them, give them a pencil, just check on them, depends on the day and the week. We have been, at PBIS school, we've been doing Tier One for two years. This year, we are starting to implement Tier Two, which is the next step. It's for the kids who aren't getting by with what we're doing with Tier One. Tier One is for all the kids, it's like the general ed classroom instruction. And we have the kids who aren't still learning, and we do interventions. Tier Two is interventions for kids with behavioral issues. And so, our counselor has been working on groups, and we've been coming up with some ideas to help those kids and find what makes them tick. We do have our attendance incentives also, and we're doing weekly, some weekly things. We have some trophies, we're doing a monthly incentive, and then we're also doing it end of the year, kind of if you've missed five days or less, you get to go to get a reward. And then, we also have star students. And what we do, Ms. Lewis and I look at all of our students' data and the star data, and then we talk about our goals for the next time, and we come around, give them little stickers or pencils, and talk about their scores and what we expect next time, and they have loved seeing us in their classrooms doing that. I feel like I'm talking too much, huh? Our Title I teachers, we just have only working with our K-2 students now. We are, we have one less Title I teacher. And we feel like if we put our efforts into our guys when they're little, and we make sure that they're strong in reading, that we're not gonna have the academic issues later. So, we might see a year or two to see that transition, but I think that's gonna make a big difference for us academically. We also have made a big focus on inclusive groupings in the general education. in the general education class. Our Title One teachers are mainly working there and so are our special education teachers. That kind of helps bridge the gap for what kids are learning. And also, those teachers are seeing how instruction looks in classrooms, that's not separate. And also, the gifted teacher and our special education teachers, when they have open times, that they don't have minutes that they have to meet with students, do intervention and enrichment groups with our students. So we utilize them all the time. And so then the last part is just our professional development for the year. And we've really been focusing on the Eureka Math because I feel like that's going to really build our math skills. And then CAGEN Cooperative Learning is going to make our instruction overall stronger because it is strategies to help our teachers engage all of our students all the time.
Something else that we're focusing on is encouraging our parents and community to be involved in our school. So we've been holding parent trainings. So when the parents come to the training, we talk about opportunities that they can volunteer in the school as well as the expectations for working with our students. We have completed over 50 parent, or 50 parents have been trained or grandparents or community members have been trained in our parent training. We have them, they run our school store. So twice a month, twice a week, two times a month, we have parents who run our school store where students can use their PBIS rewards to come in and buy items. We also have parents who come in and pop popcorn for us as a fundraiser. We had our parents come in for Veterans Day. We also had community members who actually don't have children at the school, but they came in and were recognized during our Veterans Day ceremony. We had a grandparents' day where we had, I believe, over 300 people in the building. Sets of grandparents for their kids. We have four Title One Math Nights, Family Nights, Math Night, Wilderness Night, Science Night, and then Celebrate the Arts this spring. Some other things that we're doing with the community is we have a backpack program. And we have partnered with Cornerstone Church. And Wind Lanes has helped with some food as well as Chapel Hill. And we have 36 students who every Friday take a backpack home for food. And the last thing that we talked about is we have added Lowe's and TJ's Produce as kind of business partners. They help donate things to our school. And then back in the Forest Festival time, the Vietnam Motor Wall was going to pass along Route 20. So all of our students were out on the playground. We had banners, we had signs, we were yelling and saying, "We love USA." And our students watched the wall travel down Route 20. And they got, the veterans on the motorcycles got a nice send-off.
I have a question before you go on. The enrichment and intervention that you're doing with your specials as they have time, is that focused on 3-5?
Well, it depends on the grade level that, well, it depends on the grade levels that they're working with. So the special education teacher, if they are mainly working with like first and second, they will work with them. But like the 4th grade special ed teacher works with 4th grade for those things. The gifted teachers mainly have been focusing with 3rd grade. So we have, we have somebody for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
We feel it's important to encourage both volunteerism and mentorship within our school. We have several different activities. We have a full-time librarian. She's a volunteer, Linda Riggle. Our KC Club, which has committees, I believe. They have like recycling team and they have a new student welcome committee. Safety Patrol, 5th Grade Buddies, Student Council, who is involved in a lot, even with K-2. And Citizen of the Month Program.
With PTO, we also encourage parent volunteering. Strong guidance programs. I know when Ms. Steady comes in my room, my kids absolutely love it. We get her once a week. To our last year, we only had her at Mississauga Foose once a month. So we love it because it gets, you know, our kids those little tips of having self-skills. Teacher mentor programs. We have clinical students that come in from Wesleyan, student teachers, and a lot of professional development sessions. We actually have some college students coming into our professional development. That way they can see what's going on in our schools and they can help out with those different events. We have collaboration between school and two local mental health program agencies. West Virginia Wesleyan College Service Scholars and Work Study Students coming to our school. And we also have the Appalachian Impact Mentoring Program. As of right now, we do not have any known waivers submitted to the Board of Education.
Okay, and we provide a productive and safe school environment. And as Mrs. Britton talked about, we are still implementing the PBIS program and we've started the Tier Two. We've had a PBIS kickoff at the beginning of the year and our guidance counselor, Mrs. Fetty, kicked that off for us. She, along with our pro officer, worked with Eddie Eagle's Gun Safety and went into the classrooms, all grades, with that. And they also did the Halloween safety for our K-2 classrooms. We have our quarterly perks for the kids that earned them. We went to the city park and had a cookout. And the kids love that and I think the staff loved that too.
We wrote the smores.
We made smores.
Ah, smores.
We are getting ready in a few weeks, going to the Wesleyan to watch a movie and have popcorn. In the spring, we're going to have a make and take. And then we're going to have Water Mania at the end of the year. We also have midterm perks. Each grade level does their own midterm perk for kids that have earned that. We also are doing our IPI walkthroughs. And after those of us that are on the IPI team, we collect our data and then do our graph, our data, our pie charts and all that. And then we bring it back to the staff. Instead of before, we kind of gave it to the principals and then didn't do anything with it. But now we're actually bringing it back to the staff and showing them where we need to improve. So we're actually talking to them about that. Our administrators are doing a great job with those walkthroughs, giving us immediate feedback of what's going on. Lesson plans are being checked monthly. So we have to turn our lesson plans once a month so everybody knows that they have to turn those in so that we're making sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing. We are working on our morale here with the staff as well as the students. We are trying to reinstate our social committee for the staff. Once a month, we have a birthday celebration for those that have a birthday. And we're trying to meet after school once a month just to get together outside of school, kind of get to know each other. Because, you know, the staff is big. It's hard to get to know each other when we're here at work. So we're trying to get to know each other that way. And we're also, our leadership team meets monthly to discuss issues and the PBIS team meets monthly as well.
For safety, we've been working to keep our building as safe as we can as well as provide a safe and accepting and bully-free zone for our students. We have been conducting emergency drills. We have zone leaders that we report into when we have a drill. And then after we have a drill, those leaders meet and discuss how the drill went. And then the staff gets an email from the administration letting us know what things went right in the drill and things that we need to think about the next time that we have a drill. As far as our students go, we have a KC Club, which is our Kindness and Compassion Club. It's composed of 4th and 5th grade students and led by teachers from both 4th and 5th grade. Right now, we have about 60 students combined from the two grade levels. We are also taking Rachel's Challenge as a school. And instead of writing Acts of Kindness on chain links, we've been collecting Acts of Kindness and writing them on a handprint outside of our classrooms. And up to date, right now, we have just over 2,000 Acts of Kindness that we've collected this school year so far. We do have a Citizen of the Month Program where we recognize students from each of our homerooms for their good character and whatever the trait is that we're trying to encourage for that month. As far as a 3-5 goes, a lot of us have been letting our students choose who it is that they feel exemplifies that trait. So it's interesting what students see compared to what teachers see. And it's been very, it's been good for our kids. It's given them a sense of leadership. And then when we present in the assembly who our Students of the Month are, then we've told why our students selected them. These are the students who were selected because, or if the teacher selected them, this is who was selected and why that teacher selected them. So I know it holds a great meaning for the students to hear what they're being recognized for. We did celebrate Red Ribbon Week with a kickoff. And we participated in a coloring contest and poster contest here in our building. Students signed the banner out in the front hallway, pledging to be drug-free. And some classrooms created videos to encourage drug-free behavior. Officer Stewart and our counselor both work very well together with each other as well as the classroom teachers. So they've mentioned that they've come out and done Eddie Eagle with our classrooms, but they also talked about Halloween safety with us and a Safe Touch Program for kindergarten. So and the 5th grader also gets to participate in Safety Patrol as you saw some of our students this evening. And right now, we have between 30 and 35 5th graders helping both in the morning, in the evening, and at recess time, collecting recycling. So we're a big part of keeping our school safe and bully-free.
I want to go ahead and do one to the Faculty Senate portion. Okay, so you have a separate group of papers for the Faculty Senate report. So the budget is outlined in your report. So you read that on your own. But I would like to discuss some of the multicultural and the historical awareness that we have done here at BASE. Mr. Swire's 5th grade class participated in a video chat, which was really neat. Like a student's father that was working in China with a colleague that he was working with that is from China. The students had a chance to ask open-ended questions. And they learned a lot during this time. They were also sent chopsticks and other little items from China. And each of the students, every student in his class caught something. Mrs. Irvin, she has covered some great historical awareness units, which included an archaeological dig and also an independent research study with Samuel Morse and Morse Code. So it was really neat. The 3rd grade students here at BASE, all four classes, learned about the Japanese storytelling art of komishiba. And they also took part in telling komishiba stories to other grade levels. They also made origami swans, which was, and learned that those was a symbol for peace. So I believe we have made over 1,000 swans. So to symbolize a little peace. And kindergarten and 1st grade classes had international students from West Virginia Wesleyan College come and read aloud a book to them. And those students were from Brazil and Japan also. So our interview process is also highlighted. And there's a list of the representatives from each grade level. Teacher recognition. Teachers are nominated for the Teacher of Excellence Award and monthly, we haven't received any for our school this year. Our school has a social committee that takes care of cards and flowers for different occasions as long as birthdays that are celebrated as well as having a baby, letting showers when needed. We've talked a lot about student recognition in our LSIC reports. So I'm just going to go on to grants received. Our school received $800 for the backpack program from Chapel Hill Church. Lowe's awarded our school with about $1,000 worth of materials for the maintenance and upkeep of our grounds and our playground. The Lions Club presented our school with a $200 contribution, which PBIS materials were purchased with this fund. Our students also enjoy fresh fruits and vegetables during the weeks thanks to the Fresh Food and Vegetables Program. So that wraps up our Faculty Senate report. We have a short little video of some students for you to wrap up our session.
I do promise it's pretty quick.
Anybody have questions while they're getting that ready?
And then after this, the students, if you guys want to go home, you're welcome.
And I have to ask your needs. What can we address, will we help you with?
Well, I mean, in all honesty, when I feel, I feel like when I have needs that I, we've had some technology needs. I put them in class and they're honored. And we need books, we've gotten extra books. I feel like the things that we need are provided to us.
Great.
We appreciate it, yes. We appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our favorite part about BASE is being on Student Council. It teaches us about leadership and responsibility. We love BASE.
And love the country. We love the country. Stuart keeps us safe. He teaches us about Eddie Eagle.
Don't touch, run away, tell no one stop. Don't touch, run away, tell no one stop.
We're in the kindness program, we do recycling. We do recycling to help the earth.
I celebrate Veterans Day with my head. I watch the chorus with my dad.
I eat cake with my pop. I gave my dad a medal.
Our new counselor, Mrs. Fetty, is awesome.
And they jammed us on the big wall. And then they, and then they even went in it. And then, and then, and then they jammed us. And then we watched a movie that was teaching us about the side.
I, I liked coming to Tassie's because I ate pizza and went to Star Labs.
Is that really the thing? Because they get to stay in the street. And other people get to stay in the street.
My favorite part of school is math because, because math is easy.
I have a good friend who's a nice teacher.
We love the country.
Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll resume our meeting. Before we resume our meeting, we have a presentation from the Atlantic Coast Pipeline Impact Local System. Mr. Cozad?
Cozad.
Cozad, almost.
Nothing fancy. Boy, I thought it was going to have a cast of 100 here. A little bit less here. But thank you all for inviting me here tonight to address the board. I appreciate that. I know your time is important, so I'll be as brief as I can. I'm from Pittsburgh. Don't hold that against me. But I've been here living with you guys for the last three years. So I was down here when the project first started in another capacity. And now I've taken on the role of what they call a community liaison. And what that means is I'm going out and dealing with all the organizations, all the school boards, the hospitals, the police departments, Chamber of Commerce, anybody that I can talk to to try to make a transition into our construction that's going to begin in, the real heavy construction is going to begin in March and April. That's when you're going to see a real influx of people. And for your particular county, there's going to be a 2019 piece and a 2018 piece. So over the next two years, you're going to see a good, a good many workers in here. I would estimate 400, 500 probably somewhere in the county working the south. What I call the southeast part of the county will be built in 2018. And then the area up around Buchanan here will be in 2019. Just to give you an idea of the timetable and what you can expect. That's at least the plan today. And I think that's probably going to hold. As far as the impact of the school goes, I think your biggest impact's going to be your bus schedules and safety and those kinds of things on the roads. So Mr. Wager and I talked briefly the other day. And we'll have separate discussions with our safety people and the general contractor, they'll be on board. There's really not a lot of people here yet. The thing hasn't kicked off in earnest yet. But they'll be here, they'll start rolling in after the first of the year. And the specialists in the various disciplines that we need to talk to, we'll get them all together and come up with plans and procedures that make it as inconvenient as, minimize the inconvenience to you folks, okay? There's going to be road closures. There's going to be times when there's going to be heavy traffic on certain roads. We want to try to coordinate that with when the school buses are going to be out there and those kinds of things so that we can, you know, keep your kids safe and, you know, have as little impact as possible on, you know, the day-to-day routine that you guys try to keep, keep going with these kids. So that's my goal, basically, is to coordinate all the efforts between all the different entities that are working on the pipeline and then the folks like yourself. So my goal is to be here on the ground all the time. I'm in Lewis, Upsher, a little bit of Randolph County. I have a counterpart that many of you may know, Denise Campbell. She used to be a delegate to the West Virginia Legislature She used to be a delegate to the West Virginia Legislature from Randolph and Pocahontas. And then I think she ran for senate, which included, includes Upsher County. She's working with me. She handles that kind of, that, that piece of West Virginia. I'm handling this, but we flip back and forth. You'll probably see her over here from time to time. So those are the basics. Those are what I really wanted to talk to you about and let you know I'm here. And I could just inform my Mr. Wager that my beautiful face was in the paper. So I guess a lot of other folks in the county are going to know who I am too. So anyway, that's, that's the, you know, the real reason I wanted to come here to introduce myself tonight, let you know what's going on. Well, I will, we'll mention one more thing. Rocky Fork Road, for those who don't go out that way very often, there's a big campground that's just been put together out there. 150 new, I've heard various numbers, but anyway, it's around 150 camping sites. So the morning meetings and a lot of the folks are going to be down in that, in that valley, down in that area. So you'll, you'll see a lot of activity down there. But, you know, obviously, in a county, you'll see people everywhere. So that's really what I wanted to tell you tonight. I'll take any questions you guys have that, you know.
From an education standpoint, we have a vocational school here.
Yes.
And when the deep mine was operating, and we would know we needed electricians, small engine repair, welding, those types of skill sets. What would people need to muster, learn if they want to work in the pipeline business?
Okay, that's a great question. And that's one of the things I think I'm going to try to get the union folks in here. This is a union job. So it'll be a lot of different trades that are involved in, you've got equipment operators, you've got welders, you've got electricians, you've got, you know, just about any trade, carpenters, you just, just most of your basic trades are involved in the construction of this pipeline. So since it's a union job, they're going to be put in various union halls. You know, it's probably going to extend beyond this area to get enough people that they need. But at any rate, they will be hiring locals, apprentices, and other things to get, you know, the skills that they need to continue on in the pipeline business. So those folks that are in your program today would be prime candidates maybe for, well, it's going to be tough maybe for, for this year. But I mean, you, you understand the, yeah, the timing and everything. But, you know, past, you know, ones that just graduated, those kinds of folks, they'll be seeking out and trying to get those into the apprentice programs. There'll be general laborers that they're going to hire as well. So those exact numbers and everything, I don't have for you just yet. But I will be back and we will try to get those tradespeople into, if you want to talk to you, whatever, we'll make them available. And, you know, whatever it is that we can find.
You know, career day or some opportunity, it's a good time to, for kids to think about it and...
And I think that'd be a great thing if we come in and put on a brief presentation with the various units and say, here's what we do, you know, here's what's involved. And, you know, and have them show, for guys that are doing it every day, that this is what we do. You know, and yeah, we're going to try to get that, that piece of the puzzle in there for you as well, yeah. Okay? Anybody else? That was, this is the most informative school board meeting I've ever been to in my life. And I've been to a bunch, folks. This is awesome.
Good.
You do this all the time, or is it just?
Every year.
Every.
Every school.
Every penny school. It's awesome. Yeah. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item nine is unfinished business.
Well, we have a lot of unfinished business. It's not finished. Our buildings are showing their age, particularly the equipment. And the food service area, we're having problems with stingers and warmers. Garbage disposals are leaking dishwashers and things. And, you know, the equipment is showing its age. And so the guys are running from crisis to crisis and, you know, trying to keep things afloat. And that's just typical. Let's see, we have some good news. The fire hydrant at Rock Cave. If you recall, I mentioned that the school sits between two fire hydrants. And by their policy, they want us, the school within 500 feet of the fire hydrant. Well, fire hydrant on the left is 638 feet away. Fire hydrant on the right, 670 some feet. So we're going to have a huge investment putting in a new fire hydrant. And so Chief Roby of the Rock, the Banks District Fire Department, he put together, he put together a letter for BRIM talking about the plan that exists with, there's like three or four different fire departments. If there's ever an event at Rock Cave, that we respond to, to any fire situation there. And by, by West Virginia law, you know, they have more than enough hose to compensate, let's just say, the 150-feet shortage we have on both sides of the school. And so they could, you know, run the feeding lines there to run the trucks and the pumps. So to make a long story short, because of that and all the involvement in surrounding districts, we have a waiver on that, on that.
Great.
On that issue. And that's, that's important. And, but if the waiver is denied, what's really encouraging is the folks down in that part of the county, they wanted to pitch in and do what they needed to do to make sure that everything was required. So that's a good thing. Project up at the bus garage. I think Mafusla installed the wiring, probably prior to unionization. It's really antiquated. And we were probably looking at $50,000 or $60,000 in equipment and labor to rewire the bus garage and put in the, the amperage for welders and, you know, all those different connections and hookups. And we were fortunate, we've been able to engage Fred Everly, the electric class there. Can I, what were we thinking, under $10,000 maybe? I'd be surprised.
10, 12.
I'd be surprised with the materials. Yeah, with the materials. So, you know, we're looking at savings of 90% probably. So that's a blessing.
The roof was also, we put a new roof on or put plastic coating on it to keep it.
They sprayed a.
One for a while.
Yeah. They put a roof on it, yeah.
Are we, we still going to have some discussion in the future about a new bus garage? Or are we going to make do for 10 years, 20 years?
He's super vivid. Don't get further than the box.
When we're in a better financial place.
Okay, we just make do.
But, but that's, that's good news. The guys have been busy updating lighting here at Buckhannon Academy and up at the high school. And, you know, there's lights that still have the old diaplast that need to be replaced. And they've, they're, they're just working their tails off and getting as much accomplished as they can. And let's see. Hodgesville, we weren't able to run the water line that we had planned to over Thanksgiving. One of our guys, well, we had a couple injuries and guys laid up, back issues. And so that's going to be a project over Christmas break to run this, it's called, she left, I guess, to run her water line. And so that'll be taken care of. But things continue to move along. We haven't heard from the SBA on the funding for the roof at Tenterton Elementary School. We're hoping we're able to acquire that to put a new roof on that facility. The guys, they're, you know, we have four guys on our crew. They're tremendous. They're stretched, stretched very thin. And there's always, no matter where they go, there's always a lot of questions and pressure put on them because, you know, everybody has a need and a priority that they're professional, they do a great job. And I, I think things are moving along very well. It'd be nice, we have four guys on our crew who are advertising for a fifth. It'd be nice to have about nine total, but that's not going to happen, we're pushing off on that. But as far as unfinished business, that's about all I have right now.
And I would like to mention that if you haven't been up to the high school, the turf is gone, down to the gravel. And my, if the information I was right, they should be coming Thursday or this week to start laying down the new turf.
Great, great.
So excited to see that.
Any questions? All right, and then we move on to financials. You have two items there, budgetary items, attachment B, and the financial reports as of October 31st, attachment C. Mr. Carver, you have anything to add about either of those things?
Well, the budgetary items are a continuation of supplementing grants and things that we get. Plus, we're getting to the time of the year where we're starting to have variances in our individual items in our budget and trying to keep those corrected. Plus carrying over things from last year. As far as the October financials, we are continuing to run below last year's pace of spending. Salary-related items, it's been pretty consistent, the amounts that we are below last year's level because we reduced staff. And that's partially offset because of salary increments. We saw a pretty big turnaround in non-salary related. And this is a light year for textbook adoptions. And we're down about $190,000 from last year, what we spent on textbooks. And that, I think we're pretty much through that, so that should...
I think last year you said that that was an expensive year for textbooks.
And I think what, next year, Tim is math.
We're moving to math, right?
And that was, that's going to be, so we'll give that back next year, but enjoy it while it lasts. Plus, we didn't do as much maintenance projects over the summer, so we're seeing that show up in our supply budget. Plus, the, last year, we had put in the bleachers at the high school and paid for those in September. We got a capital lease to pay for those, so that kind of was a wash. That revenue won't be there as well. But, so we're tracking the budget pretty well and we're running just a little bit ahead of last year's pace for revenues. And I'm pretty confident now that we will not see a mid-year state aid cut like we had the last two years. And so that would be a help to our budget that we won't have to take money out that's already in there. Nothing else to add, unless you have questions.
I move that we approve the items as presented.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please do not say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So that means that next spring, you can have a smile on your face when the auditor comes.
Short. Forgot to mention, the auditor will be here tomorrow to do the entrance conference, to plan out the audit and how we're going to do things. And you should be here sometime during the coming weeks in December. And we'll have all the field work done and we should, and we'll have no problem meeting the March deadline for the auditor board.
Great, great.
Item 11, the consent agenda, there was nothing? Item 12, you have policies, the first reading and approval of proposed revised policy 2018, the calendar policy. The first reading and approval of proposed revised policy 4,003 attendance. You need a motion to accept those. Do you have anything to add about those, Mr. Rigor?
All the changes to, to both of these policies are in West Virginia code, action of the legislature last fall or last winter. And so we can pass them on the first reading. I believe I, there's a summary in it, and if you look over it, it's, you're just approving what the state's mandating. So there's nothing surprising.
You have a motion to accept those two?
So move, second.
All those in favor, please do not say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Right, thank you. Then we have the first reading of the proposed revised policy 6,005, integrated pest management plan. You have anything to say about that one?
We have some pests and stuff. And we had to have a plan. According to Department of Agriculture. The plan that is proposed on policy 6,005, all the changes and adjustments are according to current state code. Now, the attachment at the end, this is one of the things, what is that attachment?
It's E, attachment E.
I'm sorry, if you go to attachment E at the very end, this is what prompted the necessity to revise this immediately. And that is, the Department of Agriculture wants each school system to develop a threshold for pests. And we did not make this part policy. Because bureaucracies like to change things on a regular basis. And these are thresholds that are common throughout the state. In other words, how many ants would you see in a classroom before there might be a potential treatment? Well, you might see, you know, on our threshold, 10. Then if they're trailing, then, you know, that's another issue. If you see one mouse, that's immediate treatment. If you see one rat on the property, that's treatment. And the Department of Agriculture mandates that we have these thresholds. And so we just want to be compliant with what the state of West Virginia wants. The reason this has to have three readings, though, if you do go back to the policy. There are certain sections that the county has flexibility in, and that is how often the traps are changed. In certain locations, our PROTEC, PROTEC is our pest management contractor. And they'll put traps in certain parts of the building. Some counties that have a lot of money will change these traps monthly. Or until the adhesive wears out. I think our policy is we will change them every six months or, or something like that. And because of that flexibility in that policy, I've warranted three readings. It'd be easier if I looked for the summary. It's once reported?
Any questions about that one?
But all of the additions came right out of the materials in the Department of Agriculture. And our policy will now contain all the information that...
How did you come up with the thresholds?
Working with our contractor, PROTEC. And I think this is in Harrison County and other counties where she's employed to do business. So these are common thresholds to...
It sounds like it's a good policy to borrow.
Yes, it is, the thresholds. I couldn't imagine sitting in a room with all these people, and how many flies? How many ants do we want before we call the exterminator?
My children lick their hands and wipe it on the roads. Ants are fine for me.
So I'd rather have the experts come up with those decisions. I don't think we've come to an agreement. Mrs. Britton wouldn't want any, you know. There's an ant called the exterminator. So, you know, Mr. Wager might be okay at 20, as long as it's not an ant. Now, snake, that's an immediate. That's an evacuation, right? But it is a good policy, we're required to have.
Thank you. Moving on to item 13, the approval of the early notification of retirement incentive. That is your attachment G.
As you know, the state gives a bonus $500 service personnel. Yeah, for personnel that let us know if they're retired.
Pardon?
That's for professional instructional.
I'm sorry, professional instructional. And the county's always given an additional $500. They have to do it by March 1st, which is actually a little later than you've been in the past.
Changed last year.
Yeah, and then we also, the county gives an incentive of $500 for service personnel administrators who give like notice, though they are not eligible for the $500 from the state. It's only for professional personnel administrators on professional side.
So the only thing we're changing this year, the master's date?
Pardon?
The date's changing?
Yes. Well, it, it used to be you had to let us know by...
January 15th.
They changed it to March 1st.
Yeah, March 1st.
Extended it some, so.
And that's what, so our date's going to be the same?
Was March 1st.
Oh, it was March 1st last year, I'm sorry.
Is that still helpful, March? Can we not keep our date the same for our extra?
I think that's... No, it's in state code, it's March 1st, legislature changed that.
Even though we're adding something, right? We're adding something else?
We've always, the county, as long as I can remember, has also added another $500 to that, to make it $1,000 for the professionals. And then just a $500 to the service personnel and administrators.
And March 1st, I, I think, gives ample time to post and put people in any retired positions before the school year gets underway. before the school year gets underway, training. I think that's... I think that's enough time, if that's what you're asking. Okay. Do I have a motion to accept this incentive for early retirement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, we have two 13s. So second item 13.
Lucky 13 twice.
Correspondence or information?
As you saw in the newspaper, and I'm sure you all got my email concerning the bus wreck, very fortunate that no students were on the bus, because it was pretty... What we can tell so far is that he was coming back to the bus garage, and one of the wheels went off the burn, and he overcorrected, went across the road down over an embankment, and didn't hit any trees, but landed, from what the maintenance guys or mechanics were telling me, landed on a huge boulder. And that basically kept it from tipping over. But it tore out. We don't know yet if it's gonna be totaled, but it's not. The whole front took out the front axle.
Insurance company today, the adjuster will be here this week.
Okay, thank you for that. So it's... And it was in bad shape, really bad shape. And he was not hurt, fortunately. Pretty shook up. But it is one of our new buses. But as George explained to me, that's a good thing in a way, if there is a good thing out of this, because we'll get more money back on it for the insurance. If it was an old bus, they would depreciate the value of it, and we wouldn't get as much. Right? So I just wanted to let you know.
We have several buses we can use as a...
We have... We don't have several, we have a few.
A few?
Yeah. And we're running into a problem right now with substitutes. We don't have enough bus substitutes, we don't have enough service personnel substitutes, we don't have enough professional substitutes. And we're having a heck of a time, almost daily, we've... Almost daily recently, we've had classes uncovered, and we've had to... The schools, to their credit, are really stepping up and helping out with that. I wish I had an answer, but I don't, and I don't see it getting better in the near future.
We do have two new buses on order, and they should be here sometime after Thursday.
Yes, that'll help. And we did hire, well, we get to personnel, we are gonna hire eight new substitute teachers today, which is great. I'm big.
All right. Any questions about any of that? Our next item on the agenda is personnel. That is your attachment H. Do I have a motion to accept that personnel as presented?
Is that one more, please? Motion to approve as presented?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any allegations? Any public comments? Or remember comments?
Well, I appreciated the presentations tonight, the kids and the teachers and principals.
And these portraits. Those are great. Open your drawers, beggar. Oh, yeah, those are yours. That's what I said, we want those now for us. All right.
Maybe an observation, if we have a guest. I observed that Lowe's gave some material for lawn landscaping and so forth, and I've just... We've been able to travel some in our lifetime, and I observed some interesting playground equipment, some of it made out of pipes.
Not precise.
Well, I just crawled through the pipes. Could be a treehouse or something.
Put it up, college school. Maze tunnels.
We would welcome creative design, playground equipment someday or...
Okay, well, that's one of the reasons I'm here, is to put through suggestions like that, so feel free.
Our next meeting date will be Tuesday, December 12th, at 6:00. I think it's at 7:00. It's at 7:00. At Union Elementary School. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for a student hearing?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are not in executive session.